The time is now seven thirty-two. This is the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two work session of Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us in the morning this end of the webinar. At this time, I ask everyone to please unmute their devices so as not to distract from the business of the meetings. There'll be one opportunity during for public comment during the work session and two during the regular session. And what they appropriate time. I'm going to please move the Open Public Meetings Act.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the December fifth, two thousand twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record through Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
And please do that.
Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell. Absent. Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski.
Here.
Mayor Bernstein.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I would like to hijack your meeting for a moment.
Yes. Right?
Um.
Wouldn't be the first time.
So this, I have the honor tonight of reading a proclamation. This is Mayor Bernstein's last full meeting. After being on the council for so many years and then of course mayor for four years. So I would like to read this proclamation. And then we can all kind of celebrate and have a little chat. So proclamation in honor of Mayor Ari Bernstein. Whereas Ari Bernstein is a lifelong resident of Allendale and a proud graduate of the Allendale School District and Northern Highlands Regional High School. And whereas Ari's early dedication to Allendale was displayed through his coaching of his daughter's softball team. And whereas Ari represented the needs and concerns of Allendale residents for ten years on the council, serving in that capacity from two thousand and eight to two thousand and eighteen. Whereas during this time on the council, Councilman Bernstein served on various committees, including the Public Safety, Administration of Finance, and the Land Use Committee. And whereas in November of two thousand eighteen, during a heavily contested election that we all remember, the voters of Allendale elected Ari as mayor, where he has served for the last four years. And whereas Mayor Bernstein's love of his hometown and his understanding of the importance of looking to our past was exemplified by his words upon being sworn as mayor, when he said, "I am standing on the shoulder of giants, and I am deeply indebted to the men and women who have made Allendale such a great place to live and raise a family." And whereas a benchmark of Mayor Bernstein's tenure was his leadership in managing Allendale's response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas Mayor Bernstein has served the residents of Allendale with honor and dignity during his time as councilman and mayor. Now therefore, we, the members of the council, on behalf of the residents of the Borough of Allendale, on the fifteenth day of December two thousand twenty-two, hereby acknowledge with gratitude Mayor Ari Bernstein's dedicated service to the Borough of Allendale and wish him continued success in his future endeavor. Black that is presented, which is the key to Allendale.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, we want to collect the picture together.
Alright, so let's, wanna do that? We're done now?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we come while we're up here? You guys come on up.
You go.
Hold there.
Are we gonna take the?
Yeah. For the green?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let me take a look at my dog.
Stand straight, man.
So where are we looking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, as ours.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I, I know next we have.
Wait, I think we have a couple of comments, don't we?
Oh, no, this is not a five-minute paper.
So I will start and just say it has been really wonderful working with you all these years. My gosh, we went to high school together, so we've known each other for a really long time, even though I'm older. Um, but no, you, you really have this wonderful way about you, Ari, where you really can conceive all sides of the story. And you really can understand all the elements of what people are talking about. And you really do try to understand both sides to really make a, you know, a conscious and well thought out decision. I think that's a really wonderful trait to have. That will take you long, long places in life because that is just, you know, it's good to have just any type of, any type of situation. So we're having fun on the council.
Yes.
I hope you're feeling good and you're feeling like you're gonna have some free time now.
It was Councilman O'Connell that asked me if we're leaving the public safety meeting, whether it was bittersweet. And honestly, it's been sweet. It's, I mean, it's, um, so I have my words that I'll, I'll, I want to share with you guys, but it's, I, nothing but love in my heart for all of you and for my time up here. So.
You want that?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you, I have such.
Somebody else can go.
I would like to thank you for your guidance and your mentorship over the years, most importantly, over your friendship. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you. I shall never forget the evening spent in this room recording videos with Ron and Tyler during the pandemic. Keep everyone up to date. It's been nothing but a pleasure, even when arguing with you butt heads, but there's always respect. You're constant gentleman. I wish you much success.
Thank you, Matt. We appreciate it.
Alright, I have some notes, which is normally, yeah, I know, this is a few, but, um, I feel so fortunate to have been a part of your council this year. I mean, years ago, I remember you and I talking about someday hopefully being lucky enough to serve on council together. And we got a year together, and I am so happy about that. We've been friends for many years, and I know, as says everyone in this room, how much your love for your hometown just kind of emanates from you, from your days of, both of us cheering on our girls during softball together, to you helping me pop up the Fell House tent during Allendale Festival Day. You enjoy being a part of the incredible fabric of this town. And as mayor, you had an act of making every resident feel heard and appreciated. And I admit, witnessed many of those residents, some in the audience right here, share their appreciation of you in turn. I was so happy to be placed on the land use committee after being on the land use board with you for many years. And being a part of the newly reestablished Green Team has been a lot of fun. And so I thank you for making my first year so enjoyable. Thank you, Ari, for your friendship, for your, hang on, for your many years of service to our council and for your term as mayor. I do appreciate it. So I'm honored to present to you, to our handsome hometown mayor, another little token of our appreciation on behalf of your council and the great residents of this town.
Oh, my goodness.
And many thanks to Fred, let to, well, help me pick it up.
That's wonderful. Do I open it?
If you want to, sure. You're not gonna make eight oh three today.
No.
And we don't need to.
What in your? Can you see? Uh, the, the bank is there, so probably about nineteen thirty. Wow. So wonderful. Have you seen it?
Yeah, exactly.
That would be part of the one that we did. Eighteen seventy-six Walker Atlas.
That's incredible.
So, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I will treasure it. It'll go on my wall, and I'll think of you all when I look at it. I appreciate it. That's great.
So I just have a few, I will not give out one or more on record, but I, I will say that I too have spent a lot of time with Ari, not only on the council, but we have two daughters that are the same age that have had a lot of fun, a lot of sports, a lot of soccer cups and, you know, winning and losing. And Ari and I being together, sometimes coaching, and then later on me carrying him coaching. But it's been, you know, personally, that way, a lot of fun. And I do remember you when you first expressed an interest in going on to the council. And it was, you know, a great opportunity. You do love Allendale. You who is loving Allendale. And as husband said before, other people have noticed that and respond to that. So it really has been a pleasure having you out with me to share a lot of different, you know, events with you as, as we've grown up.
Right.
So thank you very much for, you know, supporting me as I came on to the council.
And. And, and your support of me when I came on.
A great run.
Right.
So great. And I'm thrilled that you are feeling happiness in the room because that's the way that you want to be able to slip back on your years. Since two thousand and eight, that's a long time. That's a lot of meetings. So thank you very, very much, and I know you all appreciate the efforts.
Thank you. I do appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, Ari, I'll just make it fast on you if you wanna, you wanna say. So I've had the honor and pleasure of serving three mayors. You being the last one, uh, three very different mayors, both good, but very different. And I think it's great that in Allendale, boy, came back, or never really left. Had to serve the community and as a councilman and then a mayor. And I just hope that future generations take, take that as an example.
Thank you.
I really do.
Thank you. No, it, it, and that, that, it's meant a lot, and I appreciate it for you. I appreciate it from all of you. I do, I was trying to, for the last several months, say, figure out what I was gonna say at this moment. I'm going to, I'm gonna take, I don't know if anyone else has anything to say, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak.
Well, I'll try me right now. I guess we were eight years together, four years, you're serving as mayor. And today, when I, when I think about, uh, your dignity and class are really more than anything else. And, and there's probably so many things, or so many episodes, and some have been, you know, alluded to or referenced already. But I always think of, um, giving out presentations, whether it was someone who was eighty or ninety or a hundred years old being recognized, or as it was the last meeting, a young girl being here. And, and the warmth that you have always manifest to, to somebody who was here, making them feel warm and making them feel welcome. And that is not a trait or a characteristic that everyone has. So apart from, you know, intellect and, and, you know, all the things that we know you for, and obviously you, you have been our Mr. Allendale. But beyond that, it's, it's amazing to see the way you related to everyone here and treated them essentially as a member of the family. And I think that that's how you looked at everyone in Allendale.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go by order, and I'm gonna speak, right? So.
Your agenda.
Okay. Fifteen years, honor, honor is the word that came to mind. I'm gonna use it a couple of times, but the honor that you all gave to me, the honor that I felt to be councilman and the mayor. I reached out to Fred to find out the, the list of people, and I said, standing on the shoulders of giants, I truly were, you sent me the list. If I named five, I would have left out ten, so I decided not to name any, but I, to follow in the footsteps of great men and women who made this town, a town that I grew up in, a town that I play ball in. I feel so fortunate to have worked with such a great group on the council and off the council. I am overwhelmingly struck by how well everyone worked together. You don't see that in other towns, in any of our neighboring towns, you see. Whether we agreed or disagreed, whether we agreed or disagreed, I just, we came together for the greater good. I mean, that just, and I, it was amazing when I think of what Vince, I spoke to Vince this afternoon, and I mentioned to him that I would be speaking of Vince and Liz, I mean, what, the Financial Advisory Committee. Ten, you know, wonderkins, brilliant people in the room, trying to figure out how, what's the best move for Allendale. For, I've been up here for fifteen years, and I can say unequivocally, we never had a decision, we never came to a decision that we didn't think was in the best interest of Allendale. It was never someone that, that, that was doing something for their own, for their own betterment or their own good. And I just think that that's, that's amazing. I mean, I, I feel so privileged to have been a part of that. I remember a couple of years ago, someone, it was a criticism, it was a backhanded criticism. They said, "Oh, you guys are always six oh, six oh on, on every vote. How can you be six oh, six oh?" Like, like, we're, we're rubber stamping what people are doing. And I said, "That's not the case. We don't." There's a lot of things that we don't agree on, and it never comes out of the committee, or the things that we don't agree on, but we, we find a way to agree. And that's, I think, the magic of what we have. Liz had it when she was mayor, Vince had it when he was mayor. We don't agree, but we will find what's best for Allendale. And that was really the end goal, and I think it was the end product for us, for at least for the fifteen years. My four years as mayor, I think part of it was definitely defined by COVID, COVID-nineteen, March twenty twenty. And it, it changed all the rules, everything changed. We as a borough changed what, what, how we, how we acted. Whole new lexicon that we were not even familiar with, SARS, COVID-nineteen, social distancing, lockdowns, closing Borough Hall, closing the schools, closing the businesses. Those nightly reports from the county that we had to then report in terms of how many cases. Governor Murphy's executive orders, everything changed. Our first responders, right? I mean, they were on the front line, and this is, I know it's my night, but it's not my night, it's our night. What they did, day after day, going into homes, a Darryl, or how many, we'd go into homes where there was a known COVID case, where they would have to go in and help people. The fire department, the police department, ambulance corps. I remember when that started, uh, when we started in the, and I think, Tyler, I think you were there, and Matt, I don't know, I think you were there. The first meeting in the police department, we're all huddled. Now we know how silly it was, but there were twenty-five of us huddled in the police department. I think Tyler went up for fear at the A and G after that, right? And then, um, and everything would change. And then what Matt said to my, to John, to Tyler, to Ron, to Matt, where we got, where we did those videos, and under, almost under the cloak of darkness, we came in, drafted them, we talked about it, we wrote them, we videoed them, we sent them up, and then maybe we cheered with, with the urban or two at, at the end. But I couldn't have done it without you. And I'm so thankful to have had you by my side. I couldn't have done it with a lot of people. There's been a lot of support over the years up above. Assemblyman Christopher Phillips, Assemblyman Kevin Rooney, Senator Kristen Carrato. They've always been in our corner. They've always done for us. Chris is a friend of mine. After a hurricane or after something, he would call up and ask if there's, is there anything he can do? And I, and you're gonna, you have that too, Amy. You're gonna have it, and they're just wonderful. Allendale is a special place. Somebody posted on Facebook on oh seven four oh one the other day about how comforting it is to be able to look out. And either you look at the neighbor ahead of you, that you're behind you, on your side, and you know that if you needed something, they're there. And I've often felt that, and I, and it, it brings, it brings tears to my eyes because that's what Allendale is. That's what we've had, right? If you have a problem, that, there's, they just, they can't do enough. The residents can't do enough. And, and I feel so honored to be, one, to be the mayor, who've been the mayor, two, to be a part of it, three, to, to, to live here and to raise a family. And when I think about what we've done, trying to maintain the uniqueness of Allendale. And Amy, you and I have discussed this when we talk about the budget. We have, you know, where do we spend the money? Where do we save the money? Where do we invest in our infrastructure and look to the future, right? It's a balancing test, and we still, we try to do it while holding the uniqueness of Allendale. It's a special place, and we're very cognizant of it. We're all very cognizant of it. Steve and I know that this is your last night, and you're gonna have your time, and I'm gonna tell you, you've been very cognizant of that. You've attacked those ordinances trying to keep Allendale, you know, the, the, the way that it is. Listen, Mayor, I thank her for keeping us on, on the, the straight and narrow. I'm not gonna miss the monthly, the, the budget meetings, but I, I, I thank her. To everyone at Borough Hall. The clerks office, the finance office, and the building department, thank you. You're on the front line. A shout out to Michelle Ryan and Tapiana Markey. I appreciate all that they did for us and what they, they, they did for me. I felt like they always had never-ending support. I'm gonna make it quick. Ron. I can't put in words how much you meant to me and how much you've helped me and you've helped the borough. I don't know how you do it. Every borough and every mayor should have someone like you, but we're not letting you go anywhere. So, but thank you from, from my heart. I could not overstate how wonderful it's been, Ray, your intellect, your acumen, your knowledge, your experience, the way you can deliver it, the way you can see the landscape. I'm not sure how you do what you do, because I know you have the meetings until eleven o'clock, and then you said five o'clock, you're in the office, then it's seven AM, you're at the next meeting. But I'm, I'm not sure how you do it, but I'm so thankful that, that, that you do. You are, you have been such a resource that I've never taken for granted. And with that, I'm almost done. To Amy. I'm so happy for you. You're gonna do wonderfully. You're ready, you're, you, you, you have it, and you're gonna do a great, great job. To the team, Amy, Matt, and Tyler. Tyler, you've been groomed for this position for years, since, since that, however many years it was when you came in.
Seven.
Yeah, so I, perhaps the bittersweet part is that you're not gonna, you and I won't be serving at the same time. But it's, I'm thrilled. I'm so thrilled. And so to the three of you, I'm wishing you all the best. You're going to do wonderfully. I look forward to reading about it, hearing about it, or watching it on Zoom from the local bar.
So we have another proclamation that we'd like to leave, actually, one minute back, but it's not like that.
We have that.
We have that.
And we can continue. You can go. This is mayor's privilege. We're gonna go along. So I'm gonna read this one.
Oh.
You didn't know, if you wanted to.
No, I can't listen, but that's me.
No, you do it. If you're ready to do it.
I thought you could relax a little bit.
I can.
Right. I didn't. Proclamation in honor of Councilman Steve Sasso. Whereas Steve Sasso, a longtime resident of Allendale, has established Allendale as his home along with his wife Rosa and son Robbie. And whereas Steve Sasso has served the Borough of Allendale as a member of the council from two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-two. And whereas Councilman Sasso, before serving on the council, served Allendale in various capacities, such as the planning board overseeing many projects that have benefited Allendale. And whereas Councilman Sasso's passion on the council was to review and evaluate our ordinances and codes to ensure that the residents of Allendale's quality of life is always protected. And whereas Steve's devotion to our veterans and honoring their sacrifice was exemplified by leading the effort to dedicate streets to Allendale's fallen heroes. And whereas Councilman Sasso has served the council with a devotion to improving the lives of Allendale residents. Now therefore, I Liz Holman, on behalf of Mayor Bernstein and the entire governing body and residents of the Borough of Allendale, hereby acknowledge with gratitude Councilman Steve Sasso's dedicated service to the Borough of Allendale and wish him continued success in his future endeavor.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I get to say, oh.
Oh, I know where that's going, right behind my Zoom call.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Tech, do I have any time to say that real quick?
Yeah.
I'll be quick. So it's kind, this kind of started ten years ago at A and G, probably. When Councilwoman Jackie McSwiggan said, "Hey, what did you run?" I'm like, little old me? And then three terms, nine years later, you know, here we are. I was never a big fan of campaigning. It's just not my style, so, but I did it because, well, if you want to serve the borough, you had to do it. Not, not comfortable talking about myself, as one of my colleagues said, you know, you guys suck into modesty. You really have to stop.
Like, it's a campaign.
I know. I said, alright, you know, I'll try, I'll try my best. But what I did really love is working in committee at seven thirty in the morning and working on current ordinances or creating new ones that, thank you, Ari, for saying that earlier, that will make or continue to make Allendale a better place after I'm gone. I don't mean dead gone, I mean, you know, a warmer, drier climate gone. But as a kid, we used to come up down, my mother would come up to Allendale to go swimming. And I, and I don't, I can't say how long ago that was, but the movie at the time that summer was Gauze. And it was like a day in the country to me, I kind of felt like. And I guess in the back of my mind, I always knew I'd come back. And about the time I got into council, my employer said to me, you know, you want to get ahead, you're gonna have to go to Dallas for a while. And I'm like, I said very nicely, very politely, I am not going down. You know, nothing against Dallas, but I wanted my boy to grow up in Allendale. I wanted him to go to school from kindergarten through twelfth grade in Allendale, and now my Northern Highland senior boy is on the wrestling team and not the rodeo team. So I'm, I'm, I feel good about, I feel really good about that. I don't know where the years went and the time went. But I am proud to have served three mayors in this job, but it is a job. And I have no regret whatsoever, except I made some friends, like one sitting next to me. And, you know, you're gonna be busy. I, I have a lot of time back. You're gonna be busy. I just, please, stay in touch. That's my only regret, that I won't be working with you at seven thirty in the morning, and then again at seven thirty at night.
Expect to text us this.
Oh, you'll get it. And by the way, wait till I show up over there. You're gonna wish.
You gotta open up the meeting before you can say anything.
My only other regret, if I have one, is that I will not get to serve my fourth mayor and my very good friend Amy Wozinski, who I worked probably closer with in the last nine years than anybody, and I enjoyed every minute of it. We didn't know, as Ari was alluding to before in the council, the six oh vote, we certainly didn't always agree on everything, up to and including last week. And that was, but it was always fine, with mutual respect, and that, that goes for everybody that I, that I worked with. And I just want to thank you all. I want to thank all my colleagues on the council, the ones that called me and texted me earlier today, and some in the audience. And, you know, I, I, I know that Allendale is being loved, being good hands. And I feel good about it, and I'm looking forward to getting some time back to do something else. And thank you again.
So we're going to end the work session, start the regular session, and then we'll continue.
Okay.
Okay, motion to end the work session. So moved. Second?
Holman.
All in favor?
Bye.
So now we're going to start, but it is eight oh one. What we need to do, the time is now eight oh one. This is the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two regular session of the Allendale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person and via. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person and via Zoom webinar. Um, at this time, I ask the public present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There will be several out between speaking, we will, um, advise at the appropriate times. Do I need to do, uh, part of the order?
Uh, in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the December fifth, two thousand twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
We're in the United States of America. The experience of public and police attention is one nation under God, the invisible, where everything is.
Councilwoman Holman?
Here.
Councilwoman Lavisolo?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Connell, absent. Councilwoman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Sasso?
Here.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Here.
Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you. And before we continue, I want to go back to the work session where we were and give Steve, um, uh, his time and anyone else their time to speak, you know, on behalf of Steve.
Well, I'll go, cause I'm right here.
Go ahead.
So Steve, what a wingman you are. I, I, I met Steve really when you started getting involved with the council. So I didn't really know Steve at all prior to that. And then when I came onto the council, I really got to know Steve and I feel like I would say you're like my wingman. Like you make me laugh, which is good, cause sometimes I might be a little intense, perhaps. You challenge me, which is good. You'll be like, what about blah, 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 or whatever it is. But you have my back. Like I feel like you did, again, it was challenged always in the way of just trying to open my mind to make sure I had thought about all the different options and times where I said, I don't know, I'm not sure. And you would say the, I think, especially with, with water, there was a lot. Um, you know, so I always guarantee that you would have, that you would work to have some sort of an opinion or a perspective on what I needed help with. Um, and you know, as far as the comedy side of things, you definitely helped me laugh, not only at myself, but with whatever situation I was dealing with. And it's been such a pleasure and I know you didn't love water and sewer, but it was very good for me to have him on Water and Sewer with me. It really was, cause we went through a lot of grunt work together and you'd laugh at myself. And he always does text early in the morning. They'll send articles, they'll send different things. So I certainly hope that will continue. So many, many hugs to you and I look forward to seeing you here out and about and you heckling us as, as time goes by. So. It'll be fun.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to speak to Steve. I mean, I think you, what's, what's been so wonderful about the, the experience is everyone has their strengths and weaknesses and everyone has a different vantage point. And I go, and you, you get a better product that way. And you brought to the table, I, this year, I, sir, was with you on several committees, but over the years, we've served together. And you have a different way of looking at things and you have a different style of, a different way to do it. And I, to me, that's helpful. And I, and yours is who you are. And I remember it's serving with you and being on the council, um, you bring a lot to the table. You take it very passionately and despite that email that came in two days ago about a sign, um, and you said, I don't know. And forty-five minutes later, it was, you know, before eight o'clock and you had already responded, you had already taken care of it. I mean, not everyone does, not, not everyone acts that way. You took it seriously. You brought a lot to the table. You're smart. You have it, you have a, you, you, you. And that was, whereas other people would do it differently. You did it your way and it suited you and it was good for Allendale. And I appreciate, I, serving with you has been great.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I also didn't know you, um, at all. I was thinking about that, cause I feel like I've known you for so long, but I did not know you until you joined the council. And you were on my, um, facilities committee. And we just like took Crestwood Lake by storm that year. I remember we just kind of went there every day. And we were just like looking for cool things to do. I remember we even went to Cold, bought Adirondack chairs and put them together.
And they're still there?
Yeah, they're still there. And they were only like fifty-nine dollars each. Um, but we just had, you know, it was just a lot of fun, but you always had the great ideas. And again, the other passion pretty much came through, um, definitely with Crestwood Lake. But most memorably was the, um, the signs. And that was just such a great idea. And I'll never forget the woman who came in here and was just touched in Mercurio and she was crying and she just couldn't believe it. And um, and I, fortunately, my son was part of that too and got to raise the money for, for that. It was a great project. He did all the research. Um, and it was, I did an excellent experience for him as well, but you spearheaded that. You had that idea. We tried to get people to do it. We went to the Boy Scouts, I think, and we, we just made it happen. And, um, it was a great idea. You also are also just so passionate about the veterans, recommended that Crestwood Lake, we uh, discount, uh, have a discount, um, membership for our veterans and we, and we do do that. Um, and also I think too, the legacy is the, the, um, land use. You just love land use. In fact.
I do. I'm really gonna miss that.
And like, I could easily look up the code, but I'm just like, let me just ask Steve, what, like, what's the code on this? What's the code on that? I think you worked on this, you know, because, um, yeah, you just, you just like that stuff and most people don't. So it's kind of, kind of interesting. So I look forward to, uh, the early morning texts, usually five thirty or six. Probably, me and Liz are probably the only one that answer you that at that hour. But, um, no, it's been fun. We'll definitely for sure be keeping in touch and, um, and then look forward. So yeah, many more years of friendship.
Thank you.
Uh, so, so, because I'm gonna follow her land use one. Cause it's somebody who really does like land use also. I was so fortunate to have you as my second after I stepped into some very bu- big, uh, shoes with, uh, the land use committee, um, the ones that you left behind. And um, I'm not sure there's anyone that knows the ins and outs of our code quite the way you do. And you are such an incredible resource and I have been so, um, happy, uh, to be working again with you because I was one of the people that actually did know you before you were on council.
Yes.
Um, and in fact, I do remember when, I believe it was Mr. Sarico out there who brought your name up as someone who'd be great on council. And, um, and, and you have been, and it's, um, it's obvious how much you love this town. And it's, I, I think it was actually at a Republican Club meeting where you first brought up the idea of honoring, um, our veterans and their Gold Star, um, families with, um, a more specific sign for them in town. And I'm so glad that came to fruition. We're gonna miss your expertise, but you've already said, no, that I can call you at any time. And I'm sure I'm gonna be doing that. And just thanks for your years of service, Steve.
Thank you. And you give your name for me too.
Okay.
Because it was tough for me to let go of my land use baby.
I know.
You know, but, but she's in good hands. Um, but yeah, you're gonna get some five thirty text.
You spotted those, right?
Yeah. You got the answer at five thirty, but that's when, that's when I'm percolating and the coffee's there and the house is quiet. I do my best thing.
Where do you finish? Yes, you may go now.
So, uh, Steve, my old running mate, so to chip close.
So do I.
But you have indeed, uh, your time on council has been marked by some very noteworthy accomplishments, which will benefit Allendale for many, many years to come. So thank you for everything and I wish you the best.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Kind, kind words. I, I didn't, I don't know what I was thinking. I, I didn't even think about this tonight. I don't know where my head's at. I only remember that council meeting like a few hours ago.
You're ready.
So, I mean, I guess I have to, after nine years, you're on autopilot.
Do you wanna take a picture real quick? Yeah, you can take a picture back.
Yes.
Where you wanna, I do wanna be on sale on that, so I get the last one.
Yes. I, I believe me, I would if I could. Thank you.
Yay.
What I'm gonna do is, um, I'm gonna streamline some of it. And so we're going to, since we're in the regular session, I was gonna open it up for public comment on anything you want, plus the agenda items. So, anyone wants to come on?
Liz White, twenty-sixth East Crestwood Avenue in Allendale. And I just wanna thank Ari and Steve for your years of service. I'm not sure if any of you remember Ari's first council meeting. And we're very lucky he's still sitting on that day because he almost bolted straight out the door that day. Okay? He looked at Vincent and was like, what you getting into?
Funny, I don't wanna take it, I, as I was leaving my office today, five thirty, whatever, coming here, I flashed back to that. And, and I remember, not only here, I remember going home and saying to Linda, saying, oh my God, what did I do?
Fred's nodding his head up.
The group was packed and it was the, I, were one of the couple of the top three contentious meetings in all of Allendale. Um, uh, Ari was even taken outside and tried to, tried to be anyway. But, uh, you know, I mean, we, I was so lucky to serve with you and, you know, have you there while I was, while I was mayor. Um, you know, I, I, you are such a genuine person. And how much Allendale means to you just shines right through. You know, you really do. I think what everybody said about being such a caring and loving person and really putting Allendale first all these years, we're so very grateful. And, um, thank you for not running out the door. And everything you've done. So I, I truly appreciate it. And, um, that was Allendale, you know. Yeah, and Steve, to you, uh, land use, you know, I, I succumbed having come with it. We had a lot of fun with it and I enjoyed doing it with you. And, you know, the time away and out, you know, is, is a long time for both of you since you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. With thirty-two Jerry Drive, Allendale. Um, I am a coach from Council Task. Um, and, um, former Mayor White and myself, we were with Ari on that first meeting. We hold Ohio ranks and she was allowed to tell that story. I wouldn't have fucked it in the world. But, but the two of us used, uh, Liz and I used to sit over here and go, I wonder if this guy's gonna run out the door. Um, it was, it was an interesting beginning. Um, but Steve, let me say to you, congratulations on nine years. And then you did six. No one understands the commitment that you make. Nine years is a long time. Um, to be here and to do the meetings and yet I love land use as well. I don't know why that is. That was great. So congratulations, um, enjoy, enjoy the time off. Um, so my friend Ari, um, you know, um, I think history will look kindly at you. Um, I think you basically, um, really, um, stood up and met the challenge of COVID. Um, you know, there have been other challenges, there have been other projects in the history of the borough. But basically, we were in the middle of a national health crisis that did not necessarily, uh, the public did not necessarily understand or did we have a conclusion? So the fact that, um, you know, in a, a New York mayor LaGuardia-like fashion, you communicated with the residents, I think that was absolutely spectacular. Um, but I would like to edit your proclamation, just one thing. And I think the one thing that history should remember you for is you were probably the first mayor to tell jokes.
I'm not gonna make you consider jokes.
And Amy, this is something you should consider. And to, again, my friend Ari, thank you. Fifteen years is unbelievable. Um, thank you, you know, as a resident, as a, as a former colleague. Uh, um, it's really an amazing commitment that you made to the community. I knew you grew up here. Um, you continued, you know, all, all of, all of the things that you've done. It's really, it's really an amazing, uh, career. It ain't over. Um, and I, and I hope you will kind of, um, you know, the next generation, we will be the men, with Steve and with Liz, and we will be the mentors to the next generations because that's how it will continue. So anyway, um, to Stephen, to Ari, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Fred.
Thank you very much. It's open to public on agenda or non-agenda items. So come on up. Anybody else wanted to speak up? No, we've heard enough of that. Steve, you wanna join me up here?
If I may, Mayor.
Yes.
You were about to kill.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware of this.
Thank you.
Well, before I, I speak about that, uh, I want to, uh, reiterate, uh, Mayor's words. Steve, I wanna thank you. You always respond very quickly. When I send emails and address myself. Mayor, you as well. Uh, I very much enjoyed speaking in front of you and, uh, uh, working with you as a member of the. Mutual. Thank you. I appreciate all, all that you've done. I appreciate when you've come up to share with us. I had hoped that the whole green team would be here.
Hi, Steve Rykrop, twenty-sixth and Vermin Court. I'm the beneficiary of one of those signs. And thank you. I didn't, now I know who to thank because our sign was gone for about three months before that one was put in. So great to have it.
Uh, so the, the handout that I presented, um, was meant to, uh, make everybody aware of our activities over the past year. And, uh, Mayor, thank you again for, uh, allowing us to reboot and, and continue again. We've been destroying it for a number of years. I wanted to identify our efforts to contribute to a more sustainable Allendale as we strive to make citizens, businesses and our government aware of lesser known opportunities to reduce the waste stream. Ultimately, we're saving the borough money and indirectly we're saving citizens money. And that's one of our goals. Uh, the end, uh, highlights our efforts. And share ideas with our enthusiastic council liaison Suzanne. She attends every meeting and is, uh, a good contributor to what we're trying to accomplish. And we're glad for the opportunity to share this information with you. And just briefly, I'm not going to do everything on here. But I did share some information, well, about, uh, some, uh, changes that we would like to see, uh, including perhaps getting a, uh, webpage so we can share more information with the citizens. I, I wrote some statistics about the compost bin that I enthusiastically use in my yard. And how, uh, just in my personal work alone, I've been able to take half a ton of refuse out of this issue in Allendale. And if you multiply that by other citizens' participation, we can work that up to a, a thousand dollar savings to the borough just with the use of twenty-four other now stars. I, I did include a picture where you were at the, uh, at the event during spring cleaning, where we were selling all water barrels and compost bins. We've been able to, uh, do the tracks program, take another quarter ton of material out of the waste stream. You're having a, a starter on recycling event on January seventh. And I've also identified some businesses in the areas that offer opportunities for the, uh, citizens to get rid of refuse, not waiting for a special event at Staples. They collect electronics, hold you around. And there's some statistics there that are quite impressive. And including, uh, holiday lights, uh, recycling event in Oakland. So it's, it's been a, a great opportunity. I hope to continue to do this definitely. And, um, let's continue to contribute to the borough.
Looking forward to our next rain cleaning event, Earth Day again.
Awesome.
We'll keep that a tradition.
Perfect. Thank you.
I mean, I have to say from itself that I find it helpful to get, you know, tidbits on what our homes are being recycled. I said before that having a compost bin, but some kind of maybe some pitfalls on different things. Because right now I have a lot of dirt that gets reached the high heaven. And I think it's because I haven't had enough leaves in it. But those are things that potentially, as we're educating residents and trying to get them to utilize those green machines, it should be really huge to be like, hey, remember to start off. Anyway, so thank you for, you know, wanting to educate the, the community this, this worthwhile.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Sir?
Walter Whitman, thirty-eight, Hamilton. I don't know who else to respond to here, but, but those of us who are older than the hill, I was surprised about two weeks ago, a young lady came to my door with a bag saying she wanted to recognize the older generation that you do so much for the kids. They want to respond to the older people. And I, I responded with, to the email, but they have the wrong email for me. And I could not get through to anybody to thank. I assume, Amy, you're behind it. Would you extend my thanks to them? It's very, very nice of you to do so.
Did you like the blanket?
Thank you. Oh, the blanket is outstanding.
Ah, that's so phenomenal.
They were supposed to say the mature.
Thank you. Anyone else on non-agenda or agenda items? Not seeing anyone. We will approve the minutes. Approve the minutes for December first, twenty-two work session and regular session. I would request the motion to approve the minutes of the December first, twenty-twenty-two work session and regular session.
That'll move.
Thank you, Amy. Second?
Second, Laver Solow.
Thank you. Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver Solow?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes, and thank you so much for getting those minutes right up to date.
Exactly the same thing.
Approve of minutes of December one, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two closed session meeting. Request the motion to approve the minutes of the December one closed session.
Don't move, Homan.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thanks. Linda, please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver Solow?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Next is our second reading and public hearing with ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen. Before we have a reading and a votes, anyone have any questions about that? Not seeing anyone. Linda, approve the title of ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen.
The following ordinance published here when was first here with, was first read by title only on December first, two thousand twenty-two and posted on the bulletin board of the lobby of the municipal building and borough website. Ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen, an ordinance establishing the position of fire administrator for the borough of Allendale. Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver Solow?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
So I know we've already, I'm going to open the floor for public comments on ordinance twenty-two dash sixteen. Not seeing anyone. Okay. And we had a motion at a second. Okay. Next, next we're going to go to introduction of ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen. Sorry, because we ran through the work section, we're doing these together. The ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen and or introduction of ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen. Does anyone have any questions about the ordinance? No. Okay, so I would request the council members to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen. Set the hearing for January fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in the council chamber of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, Homan.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Ordinance twenty-two dash seventeen, in ordinance authorizing the sale of certain land to Julie Muller, pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve dash thirteen. Roll call, Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver Solow?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Okay, great. Next, introduction of ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen. I would request, does anyone have any questions about that? Okay, I would request the council members to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen and set the hearing for January fifth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM in the council chamber of the Allendale Municipal Building.
So moved, yes.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
Ordinance twenty-two dash eighteen, an ordinance authorizing the sale of a certain land to Tanya Conway and Christopher Holling of thirty-six Bedford Place, Ramsey, New Jersey, pursuant to NJSA forty A colon twelve dash thirteen. Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver Solow?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
And next is the consent agenda. We have ten resolutions on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or would like to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda?
I'm having a comment on them in my report.
Okay. So I would request the motion to approve the consent agenda. Don't move. Thank you, Steve. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laver Solow?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Sasso?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wozinski?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any unfinished business? Any new business? What's due committee report which we did not do? Dr. McConnell is not here. Steve, how many has up? Almost the last time?
So, yeah, right, so almost. I think, no, tonight I want to do my pretty favor and I have no report tonight. I could uncharacteristically.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Homan?
Yes, so we do still have fourteen point five million dollars in bank from the sale, but there is remaining paperwork to wrap up the loose ends of the Veolia transaction. And that continues to be worked on by our team. And upon conclusion of all the paperwork, we will have the remaining monies from escrow. And this could take several months to complete, so just setting people's expectations. But I have complete confidence that our team will have this work completed as soon as possible. Veolia has been aggressively pursuing temporary treatment to be installed at New Street. We do hope that the NJDEP approvals will come through shortly. They will then be working to put in permanent treatment for not only the three wells that are at New Street, but also piping the water down from well eleven for treatment. And this is certainly a win for Allendale residents. Veolia is also working to put in temporary treatment at well eleven, which is on West Crescent. And as I shared at the last meeting, we do have a Q four violation for PFOA for well eleven. So letters will be going out to every resident that receives water from Allendale. This is something that, you know, we've been talking about for years at this point. And really, Allendale has been tremendously fortunate that we have not had a violation to this point. It is a running annual average. That well, well eleven, has been turned off. And, and, you know, we will only be turning, I should say, Veolia, will only be turning that well back on at the time where we must have water for the spring and summer season. Because Allendale uses a tremendous amount of water in the spring and summer season. And if we do not have that well, we don't have the capacity at this point to keep the water pressure at the level that it needs to be, even when we were on water restrictions. However, Veolia is working to have temporary treatment put into that well area by May of two thousand twenty-three. Many things have to come into place. We are trying to work with them in, you know, getting the surrounding areas prepared. They have to work with NJDEP to delineate wetlands, do surveys, extend easements, get licenses, all these things. So it is a lot of work, but Veolia is a good partner. And this is a good example of their urgency to get temporary treatment and the need to turn that well on. And I will keep everybody updated on the, on the progress. But just again, people will need to be prepared to receive those notices. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you very much.
So there's three significant resolutions, if anybody noticed, on the consent agenda. And yes, they were put on there a little bit late notice. And thank you, Linda, for putting up with the weekly emails and texts. But it's twenty-two dash two sixty-six was, which is the approval of the second amendment of the purchase and sale agreement for two twenty. Twenty-two dash two sixty-seven, which is the preliminary work agreement. And twenty-two dash two sixty, able to the execution of the redevelopment agreement. After all of my reports, every month, I talk about all the legal documents that we've been going through. These are the three major ones to in specific, which means now these are finalized. Once we approve the vote, hopefully, we can actually close the property. Once we close on the property, the borough will receive three million fifty thousand dollars. And that will be put in escrow to build our new community center. The borough will be building the community center, will be going out to bid in accordance with the local public contracts law. Hampshire will be building the seventy units. In fact, they already started to do the asbestos abatement. There's a, there's a fence around there now, and they started the asbestos abatement next week. They're going to cut the utilities. And after we close, which should be in another two weeks, we're looking to close by the end of this year. They will be demoing. They are ready to go and they're ready to demo. So we will see significant movement in that area. We will be going to bid shortly thereafter. We are waiting for final architect plans, but they're almost done. But as I've mentioned in the past, we've actually also applied for a federal grant. Significant money. It's three point five million dollars. And we have to wait for that, I think. So we would be smart to wait for that. We should be getting it. We were told that we passed for, through the first round, but we don't know obviously until the, the money is in the bank. So we are waiting on the status of that. It's actually in Congress right now. And it should be, they should be, it's on the CR and they should actually be voting on it. And hopefully, hopefully in like another week or so. So, yeah, so that's all exciting news. And I think that's it for two twenty, so I will be updating everybody. I'll start the updates again on, on the website because it's gonna, now the fun part starts. I have to thank the attorneys as much as we were battling through the last couple of, of months and swirling and swirling and swirling, but we were literally on the phone together for, my gosh, I don't know, hours and hours and hours a day. But special thanks to Mayor Meredith Vince Barra. He really has, you know, been the secondhand person in this. And I think he's, hopefully he's done today, so I don't think we have it anymore. So anyway, we'll be, actually, it'll be a different team. That'll be a new team because now we'll be doing the building stuff. So I'm looking forward to that. And the baskets for our seniors, our bags for our seniors, this is the third year that we have done it. It's the, the very successful program that we started during COVID. But this year, we teamed up with Allendale Circle of Support. So the borough gives some financial support to them and they are taking it under, under their wing. And they also supply some funds towards it. And we had another great group. We met up here at Borough Hall. We stuffed all the baskets and we delivered them all. We are up to a hundred and fifty. I think the first year we started, we were like seventy last year, maybe a hundred and ten. Now we're up to a hundred and fifty. So we keep on getting, we keep on getting names added. And it's a lot of fun and the seniors level, we come there, we chit chat with them, pop in and talk to them for a while. They'll offer you tea. So it's, it's quite nice and it's a lot of fun. So I want to thank all the people that helped. Mayor Meredith Liz White helped. She was in there still delivering. I know Councilwoman Liz Homan did and Councilwoman Suzanne Laver Solow. So we all chipped in and it was all a lot of fun. And that's it for me.
Great. Thank you. Councilman Laver Solow?
Sir, thank you. Public Safety Committee met just the other day on Tuesday. A MAC chief, Pataro, and Fire Department Chief Bayes joined us to give us updates on the A MAC Fire Department. It was good. I'm sure everyone's aware that Verizon has spent almost a week digging up the Frankenstein pipe by celery farm, a subterranean vault, which houses a number of copper phone lines that became inundated with mud and water, thereby destroying said copper lines. So not only do these lines carry radio signals from dispatch points to remote area antennas, but some agencies rely on this infrastructure for voice calls as well. And although this was a major outage, Allendale was minimally impacted due to the fact that we recently upgraded our phones to voice over IP for all the borough offices, as well as some redundancy built into the existing radio system within the backup transmitter of two headquarters. At no time did our nine-one-one connection fail. And all borough emergency services collaborating to migrate the last radio line off of this antiquated technology. Since a necessary piece of equipment will be upgraded system next year. Work with various community organizations to strengthen the outreach of our residents. As the first significant snowfall this season is forecasted, residents are reminded that on-street parking is prohibited whenever snow has fallen and the accumulation of such a file will be required. And finally, a big thank you to all of our emergency services for helping make the Holiday Observers gift from Santa event a huge success once again. As usual, Santa arrived on the fire truck on time. Chief Dylan was on scene for the entire event. And a huge set of gratitude to Ron and the entire DP dungeon for assistance prepping the area and clearing the area afterwards. We say it after every event, but the Holiday Observers cannot do it without the support of the borough and the assistance. So bring the gift to us. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilman Laver Solow?
So our land use committee will meet next Wednesday morning, the twenty-first of December at eight AM. And as we look to finish out this year, I just once again want to give a shout out to my committee members. Mayor Ari Bernstein and Councilman Steve Sasso, you guys are both going to be very missed. So we have one last meeting next week.
Good.
Ron Kissner, Anthony Hackett, Michael Reeland, who continue to just work so hard on behalf of our borough. Thank you. And I also want to thank Mike Lee Matola, who already wanted to be here this evening, but he unfortunately couldn't be. But he, he's going to come to the January meeting. Mike and I have known each other for years. We first got on the Bell House, but for the past year on some property maintenance issues. And Mike is always very fair and works hard to make sure that Allendale continues to be the charming place that it is. Come the new year, we're actually going to amend and tweak our code in ways we've discussed this year, whether in regard to tree removal or enforcing our sign, most notably neon and our lip sign ordinances. We'll, we'll work to get the wording in place. And then, of course, continue to remind our residents to check with our building department before they undertake any notable projects with their properties or businesses. Closing up this year, I want to thank everyone up here for making my first year on the council so enjoyable. And Ray, it's been a pleasure getting to know you much better, better this year as well. I was in awe of our water committee, which I was Councilman Homan's second on. And appreciative of how much time everyone up here puts into their committees. Thank you, Mark and Stephen and the rest of the Green Team for all of your diligence and hard work this year as well. We are truly fortunate to be public servants of this incredible borough ours and I thank you all.
Great. Thank you very much. Before I pass it off and get the professional reports, there's not much left in my report that hasn't been covered. And we did the Chamber of Commerce, the annual walk, we did the Holiday Observers, December twenty-first, Valley, Abbott, and the borough will be hosting a Hanukkah celebration at six PM at Borough Hall. All three of those events don't happen in a vacuum. I want to thank everyone who works to make them happen. I want to thank our first responders on A MAC, the police department and the fire department, keeping everyone safe during those events. If for my report, Ray?
Very briefly, obviously been involved with Mr. Kissner, Chief Dylan, and a lot of matters involving personnel operations, the police.
Uh, very briefly, uh obviously been involved with Mr. Kistner, Chief Dylan, on a lot of matters involving the personnel, operations, the police department. Um, other than that, you can guess that since our last meeting, the report of uh Councilwoman Homan and Councilwoman Wozinski pretty much sums up what my office has been involved in and it has been about twenty-four seven. And I suppose since this is our last meeting before uh the new year, just wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah and Happy Holidays.
Thank you very much. Uh, Linda?
Um, sorry, I didn't have anything to put there.
That's okay.
Nothing to report.
Okay, no worries. Ron Kistner, Director of Operations and Administrative Officer.
I'll give you some D B W substance. Councilman Cockland, the lead program, ten-week lead program. We have a D B W employee that I want to thank, the lodge of drawing the residents to cooperate. And uh, we can get very few calls and she has seen what the program has been very well with here. Um, uh, and in spite of what Councilman O'Toole said about the snow last Sunday night into Monday morning, uh those ice storms, which we have three of D B W employees, we went to a hundred tons of salt and will get reimbursed from the county roads, another fifty tons of salt. So where those, those storms that are ice and at that time of night, you have to be salt, food, drink, orange, because they need re-freeze. Uh, sometimes it'll be more expensive than a four-inch snowstorm that you can plow and, you know, salt plow in the home. So uh we, we have heard some, we're out next week and we will be prepared on that uh as well. Um. One of the circulating pumps uh upstairs downstairs has been ordered, uh it's causing issue with the heatings. Uh, one heating zone, which affects Alyssa's office and Hank's office. Um, but due to the other seven zones, the building is warming up. So directly for circulating pump, like everything else, nothing's in stock anymore. Uh, the downtown street, uh street skate project, phases three and four are almost completed. Lights are supposed to be in this week, um, but I'll take care of that. And um, once we get past the uh restaurant, the rest of the building is vacant, so it's a pretty simple uh completion of that job. Um, as I sent you guys emails today, we did receive a, for phase five of the project, this is phase three and four, phase five of the project. We received three hundred and sixteen dollar, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for phase five of the project, which will be the triangle block and area where Fino's is. And in twenty twenty-three, our location will be uh for D. McCurry or myself, Amy Spoker, right? I like her ideas of not requiring the changes there, but we'll do a nice decorative finished concrete, uh stamped concrete project there. And that will be in twenty twenty-four with six, six months to get D O T money. Um, uh, the, I mean, the, the clock tower, I, I put out bids earlier this winter. I received two bids. The company actually manufactured that clock. Didn't bother sending, they kept saying they're gonna send their out of Ohio. They didn't send anyone, but the board company had bid on it. Um, him, him and his brother worked on the clock in nineteen ninety-one. I can't remember if I remember what it was called, it was something, so he was very, um, not, not, well, he worked on the improvement.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, so nineteen ninety-one, they, when they did, he would work on the performance that. So to make a long story short, uh the clock will be done in the spring. We talked about removing some of the bushes and fix something, landscape area there. So the spring of twenty twenty-three, I'll be a nice project completion there. Uh, as you guys see, the company, uh, the P G, uh, P S E G project, uh you'll see that Francesco, uh, construction out there. That project is a place of bear steel. It's money, uh, public service and it, it's a good project. It's replacing steel that's been very old, bent and life expectancy, uh, a lot of it had been explored many years ago by West, uh, President Hillside. Uh, but it's, I just went through a year and a half of it in Hasbro Heights. It's a difficult project. Thank God to John Gill and the community's communication skills. We've been keeping the residents abreast of every two weeks what's happened. Um, and what's also good, um, I'll work with public service and we'll get a good amount of streets paid in twenty twenty-three. Public service is very cooperative in streets that they dig up, um, to get them paid recurrently current. And so maybe we want to spend some money on our capital budget for paving in twenty twenty-three because we do have some expenses coming. Um. But it's, that's, and then the other thing is, uh, um, it's confirmed, I spoke to Burton County, uh, Tom, Tom, Tom Conley, who's directing tile in February, but he's in charge of roads, uh, good, uh, him and uh County Executive Tedesco over the Thanksgiving holiday. And they confirmed that we are getting paid. Franklin terrified. I know former mayor Liz Webb will feature in that. He was waiting, he wanted that done many years ago and they'll be going from wall to the ground, it looks like. So we'll get all the Franklin termite days and no cost to the boat, so. Uh, some good things happen, a lot of good times, but very proud of it. Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Um, she is not the R C F O. Um, Chief Dylan indicated that he could not be here, but he um uh was sorry about that. He had another event he had to attend. Um, John Gill, Director of Communications?
Uh, so our December newsletter is on schedule to go out early next week. Our Garbage and Recycling Guide will be in mailboxes by right before New Year's, so that's gonna be done. Thank you to the uh green team for input on that one. We've included a lot of your recommendations. Um, and on a personal note, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman, for the, making the two and a half years that I've been here an absolute uh great time, so thank you.
And then, what, what you, however, and we technologically have done, I, we collectively, I mean, just where we were and where we are now are, we're like your snare, we're.
Some more, some good stuff to come.
I, I get one more I, I T report?
So, um, finer, um, you're on, there's other things, maybe you figure it better, but we're certainly looking forward to having you up here. But while you are the borough webmaster and I T person, um, anything to report?
I, I had a couple of small things. Um, one of the big things I want to mention that Matt mentioned already and I spoke to the chief about earlier today is while, and just to reiterate how significant this is, while those nine-one-one lines were down, we, Allendale Police stayed up. There was at no point did our operations go down, at no point did our phone system go down, at no point did anything go down. And it was as of today that some agencies are still without voice communication. And because we made that migration almost a year ago this month, we stayed online and I think that's very significant to note. Um, and then also on that note is since we put in the new phone system, total calls in and out internal is one hundred and three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight in the past year. And it's a lot of calls, so, you know, luckily we were able to implement that and again, we saw because of the, the advantages that it has, we stayed online. Um, another thing to note as I work with John, talk to Ron, um, we have the new, some new items on order for our council. Um, I T um redevelopment, if you will, so we're gonna have a new camera system, a couple of new pieces of equipment that are on order. Um, so we're really looking forward to that. And I just wanted to also note, Steve, with this technically being your last meeting or second to last meeting, you know, land use, I know was a big passion of yours, the street signs, I mean, those are things that people see every day. You drive around town, you see the street signs, the ordinances that you helped craft. The decisions that you made on the land use board are things that people see every day. And it's things that have benefited residents in the past years and benefit us for years to come with the master plan. And again, the things that you helped put in place, so I know that we're very grateful to you for that.
Thank you, Tyler. That's, that's why I'm walking away happy.
Yes. And then for Ari, now you, you, like Steve, have been a friend. You have served this town with great honor, dignity, and you've commanded the respect of all of our residents. And as many have said here tonight, you make everyone feel welcome, you make everyone feel warm and you listen to everyone. And, you know, while I will not have the, the pleasure of serving with you, I look forward to serving with the next mayor and council. I know that, again, your leadership, your time on council like Steve's, you know, has left this town in a better place because of your contributions and your inclusiveness to all of our residents and really helping to move things forward. And I know that we're gonna continue to do that, but you, like Liz and Vince and everybody else have started that, you've continued it. And for years to come, we will continue that tradition, so thank you.
Very well said and we're, we're thrilled to have you up here.
Thank you.
Public comment? Um, anyone on anything?
Hey, just want to comment with Tyler's uh purchases today. Yeah, they do go on the twenty twenty-two budgets, I noticed he does have to approve, but, but the expenditure in twenty twenty-three, I don't see the difference.
My purchases today were under state contract though.
Um, from the, the public, I would request a mo- a motion to adjourn the regular session.
You know, just hold on, the, the motion will be a motion to adjourn assigned ID to January fifth of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, motion to adjourn assigned ID to January fifth, seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock.
Twenty twenty-three.
Good.
Uh, motion, um, someone want to make that motion?
Don't move, Homan.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.